At 7 o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. We have Deputy Clerk Karen DeRuff, did I say that? DeRuff, I apologize. Our new deputy clerk for the city, if she can take the role for us.
Chair Lagnus.
Present.
Vice Chair Young.
Present.
Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Brink. And Commissioner Black.
Here. All right, thank you. If, we ask that if you're able to stand and join us in our nation's pledge, if you would do so.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an agenda, we have an agenda in front of us, looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any question or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, ayes have it, agenda is approved. First item on the agenda is approved Planning Commission meeting minutes from February 13th, 2019. I'll seek a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from February 13th, 2019.
I'm not the mayor, but is there a second on that?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Bless him be.
Did I miss a voting session or something?
Did I hear a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, is there any debate or question on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, meeting minutes are carried.
Aye abstained.
Apologize, we have one abstention. Meeting minutes are still carried.
Two.
Me too.
I apologize, we have two abstentions. Final pla-
Mr. Batty.
Did you get all that? Next on the agenda is the final planned unit development application for Third Lake Estates. This is a recommendation to City Council. Staff will present the recommendation, and then we can have the developer, David Madison, have an opportunity to come up and say anything extra that you wish. Generally, we allow any public comment, if there is any, and then we'll bring it back to the commission for a decision. Donovan?
Thank you. Chair and members of the Planning Commission like to present the, the final PUD application for Planning Commission consideration. This is the, the 11, total of 11 lot subdivision over on Third Lake. And this is one that did receive Planning Commission and, well, City Council approval in spring of 2018. And it's located here, adjacent to the home that Mr. Madison lives in currently. And he's here with, with Don Jensen, his representative. Involves these two properties. And what the PUD represents is reduced size for these four lots, bounded in purple on the west side, this in order to keep tree removal to a minimum, and then also to provide 50-foot right-of-way, which is adequate according to the city engineer. There's no sidewalk needed on cul-de-sacs, and so there is room to have a 50-foot right of way, right-of-way with the, the street standard width. The, there are extensive wetlands to the north of the property, and wetland delinquent has been completed. Since you, some of you members saw this last spring, the applicant has, has met with Comfort Lake Forest Lake watershed district. And originally, as shown here, I'll zoom in a little bit, the, there was a stormwater pipe and pond on this west side, you know, on this, on these steeply sloped lots, to provide some stormwater management before the waters released into the, the wetlands to the north. Well, both the developer and the city thought this was maybe a bit of a cumbersome approach and also kind of extraneous infrastructure. This, you know, these are the, as a subdivision, this would be stormwater facilities that would be maintained by the city. Meanwhile, there is the stormwater pond, you know, on this northeast corner, where the pipes do lead to there, and of course, there's drainage utilities over that. But in conversations, and including a site visit to the, to the site, the Comfort Lake Forest Lake watershed district saw the wisdom of allowing there to be basically infiltration areas along the, in the hillsides, and retain the drainage utility easement over this area for tree preservation, but also it can serve as infiltration areas, and thus avoid the, the need for this pipe and pond. So, and this is, this is kind of late-breaking news, so we do not have that, that plan before you this evening. But it's, you can somewhat tell with the, a little clearer with the, with the plat shown here, the extent of that drainage utility easement, which does, you know, is part of the plat, and that, that has not changed, I believe, from your, your previous review of this. One piece that was missing during the preliminary approval was a woodland preservation plan. The developer has provided that. That's in paper version in front of you. And it does show that only about 49% of the, of the tree cover will be, remain, and this basically acts as a limit of, limits of construction. So this will be, you know, fenced or staked in a way so that these trees are preserved on the edge of the property. These also serve as the mandatory for trees per, per new lot, for many of these lots, as well as the landscape plan shows the planting, how plantings on these, I believe it's three lots, three, four lots, will, will attain that four tree minimum. And also, I note in the staff memo how, and noted here as well, these two lots actually are in the shoreline over the district, within this single-family zoning district, and these are subject to that 25% impervious maximum that would be enforced during the building permit phase. You know, this also is a project that did go before the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, and they recommended to council that the city accept the, that $2,500 per lot parkland dedication fee rather than land dedication. And so the, there is still ongoing review with Comfort Lake Forest Lake watershed district. And so, you know, city approval is contingent upon them receiving that permit for both stormwater and sediment erosion control. And I'd like to have, recommend a Planning Commission recommendation of City Council with the conditions listed in the staff memo, with the exception of number two, in which I believe they have satisfied the woodland preservation plan requirement. And so it's a total of five conditions. I'm happy to take any questions from Planning Commission.
Commissioners, are there questions?
I had one.
Commissioner Keen?
On one of the diagrams you had earlier, it says, are they planning of putting in, are they rain gardens or, or drain tiles around the cul-de-sac? I saw it in one of the, it says like drain tile.
I mean, there is, there's curb and gutter, so there'll, there'll be, you know, storm inlets, you know, within the, I can remove these, you know, within the-
Okay, so it's just curb and gutter, there's no rain gardens in there?
No.
Well, I saw it on one of them, it said-
Drain tile.
There it is, right there.
Number five.
Drain tile and number five, with an arrow going over to the cul-de-sac.
On lot five, you're saying?
Lot five, right underneath the note, the letter five, or number five.
Oh, yeah.
See, and then the arrow goes over to the cul-de-sac. That's why I was wondering, what, what is that?
I believe that's just the piping for the, the storm sewer, is that, is that correct, Don? Is it Don Jensen, representative of the applicant?
Staff, members of the Planning Commission, I believe that that's part of the street detailing, so that there's drain tile typically asked for in the street design. So if the soil isn't going to convey the water, then it, it helps cure out, heal out the area under the curbs, that runs to the storm sewer inlets, so-
Is that behind the curbing?
So that is, right, pretty much underneath the curbing, you're right, so.
Okay, that's-
Yep.
I saw that.
Good catch.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there other questions of staff?
Yeah.
Commissioner Young?
Donovan, why was this allowed as a PUD? I, I was not on the Planning Commission when this first came forward, and so I, I need to understand why this was allowed as a PUD under our current zoning rules. And because I hadn't looked at them for a while, I, I kind of needed to refresh myself. That a PUD is allowed for purposes of creating better overall design and improved living environment, and not solely for the economic advantage of the applicant. The development as a PUD will provide the city with other significant onsite or offsite benefits or amenities. The primary function of the PUD is to encourage development that preserves and enhances the natural characteristics and valuable natural resources of the site, and not force more intense development. All open space shall be labeled as such as to its intent and designed function. I noticed in your report that there were 5.5 acres of significant woodlands, which will be significantly reduced. I have some concerns about some of the lots themselves, and, and some of the right-aways that they're going to be, have to deal with. But first, I'd really like to better understand what the, what those, those significant amenities that the city is getting in return for the PUD.
My, my belief, and what I support, why I supported a PUD application for this, was that what you end up with is, first of all, with the more narrow right-of-way, the lots, especially on this west side, have more of, flatter area and less, less steep ground, so there's just more, more usable lots, more, more area of the lot that is usable. The, the, there is not an increase of, there may be a increase of a lot or two based on the PUD, but we're still at a 1.5 acre gross density for this. So it's not a density that's, it's within the, it's in the low end, actually, of the single-family, you know, density. By having a smaller right-of-way, you're also allowing less of, you know, less, less tree, fewer trees to be removed with this. And as far as public amenities, you know, there's not, there's not really the opportunity on this site. You know, much of it is impacted by wetlands, you know, you can kind of, looking at, after the percentage of it, I think it's something like, is it 42% or so of the site is wetlands? Is that sound about right?
Of the meets and bounds legal description, right.
And so, you know, for me, it was, it was a matter of, these are a couple concessions to allow for a, for a project that has, has, you know, more, more of a usable lot and less trees removed. Perhaps Mr. Jensen would also like to add in.
And I understand that those are benefits to the developer, but I was asking for the benefits either onsite or offsite to the city.
So I'll be happy to take that one. So what we wrote, what we proposed, and what were the graphics that we used, and then maybe you could go back to that woodland preservation plan that you had up there. So in the original PUD sketch plan process that we went through, we were comparing what the straight zone, wider right-of-way would do in pushing the street and the cul-de-sac further towards the wetland and having a more practical difficulty on the, the home build side of the wetland. So the 50-foot buffer was still going to be honored, the ability to create pads and the same lot numbers would work, but by being able to utilize the flexibility of having a 50-foot right-of-way, which isn't allowed in the straight zone, so we needed the PUD request to have a conversation about that. And then looking at the reality of the 25,000 square feet was desired in some cases to provide opportunities for well and septic. In this case, we've got sewer, so we've got a lot size that really just needs space for a well, and you've got the, the services from the city for the, for the sewer. It allowed that inside curve of that cul-de-sac to be requested to be slightly fewer thousand square feet, so instead of 25,000 minimum, now we're down at 23,000, with all the frontage necessary to provide an adequate street sense and presence. So what's the value to the community and the city? The value is additional properties that are in the community stock that are wooded. So we normally feature in any community, what's the end product? You're proud of the neighborhoods you allow to be made, we're proud of the neighborhoods we make as development community that are in the city. And so the benefit isn't necessarily another piece of dugout or public infrastructure for the city to maintain, sometimes it's the benefit of the neighborhood we're able to preserve. And so in this case, by having the slightly narrower right-of-way, we're able to consolidate the tree clearing by our constant badgering of the watershed for the infrastructure that's on the west side, which had a perpetuity obligation to report, is the pipe working, is the pipe not working? By that going away, that is a benefit to the community. And that's where there was this dance on total tree preservation going on, in that we did not need to clear in order to put a pipe in the ground, we did not need to clear to put an infiltration basin, that many people have skepticism of whether they truly work as good as they're proclaimed to work. But that allowed us to save about another 20,000 square feet of tree clearing on the west side, for the benefit of those three lots. So in circling back, the concept plan, the preliminary PUD, recognized that what we were able to do was slight arcs and wiggles of the right-of-way shape, and by looking at how we made the 11 lots work using the PUD and some slightly different line shapes, that was the benefit that we were looking to both achieve, and we think we accomplished that with this plan. So we didn't need extra forgiveness on shorter setbacks to the front of the structure, the, we didn't need width concessions, we really were just looking at the 50-foot right-of-way, which many communities do have, and the city's used in certain cases under a PUD. So that's the flexibility. In the long run, the city has less road surface to maintain, less other area, so some of the win-win is in long-term budgeting. And that was our story, and that was what was approved at the concept level and at the preliminary level. And that's what we're here to bring forward with the ability to say that we've achieved 51% tree clearing of the site, but about 19,000 of that is for the larger water quality infiltration basin that is in the northeast portion of the site, in order to get it to the wetland. So all the water off of the front half of the lots, the street drains to that, all the water that drains down the hill to 224th gets caught in a sewer pipe at what is a enhanced ditch, and then it is back-drained, so that storm sewer pipe goes deeper to the north in order to get to that pond that is up in the northeast. And, and it is up on a sand knob, and so the trees that we are preserving are a nice blend of, of maples and of basswoods and of cottonwoods and aspen, and not many oaks on that, so. Hope that answered your question.
And the same result of tree preservation could have been achieved with, with fewer lots and not having to, to have the, a couple of those lots being smaller, or to have the, the 50-foot right-of-way. I am concerned about some of these lots because of the, I need to, sorry, I need to hunker up here, between four and three, especially three and then five also, the, there are right-of-ways that have to, oh, thank you, that, that have to be maintained, and quite frankly, where you've got the pads is almost right on top of those right-of-ways.
Do you mean easements or-
Easements, pardon me, pardon me, easements, thank you, sir. The easements. I'm not really sure how, for instance, if they wanted to fence their lots, how they would do that without being right on top of the easements, you know, because of, of where the, the pads are going to be situated.
Is there a question there?
Yeah, there, well, it's, goes into the, fewer lots on this and not going with the PUD, I think would have, would have given you fewer challenges, and given your future homeowners fewer challenges, and preserved significant woodlot. But again, I, I was not on the Planning Commission at the time that this was brought in as a PUD, so I, I was curious as to how this came about.
Sure. Well, just to allay your concerns, I don't believe that the city commonly allows fencing over stormwater easements, or if, if homeowners choose to do it, it's at their own risk. So the frontage here and your criteria was 100-foot of right-of-way at the right-of-way, and as you can see, the lots that you were referencing pie a little bit to the outside. So their width at the building permit line is greater than the 100-foot minimum, and I believe on lot four, lot three, they're somewhere in the vicinity of 115 feet. There aren't too many homes that are stretching out to more than 70 feet these days, so that left quite a bit of room for that piping scheme to work, and of course, in many cases, now the newest neighborhoods are consuming more land with ponding, and so from a development perspective, you know, you have a lot of fees that come through the development process today that are an important part to try to recapture and still price fairly in, in a lot coming to the marketplace, so you're no stranger to hearing a number of those through different positions you've been on over the years, so, you know, the more that you can do and still make a nice neighborhood, one less, two let lost, less, it's in the eye of the beholder whether or not you really have anything better or worse, and in this case, we thoroughly believe that what we've got here is, is pretty high-quality for a new home site, and that the people that live here are going to be pretty happy about the trees that we are saving in the rears of their yards and the expansive backyards that they do have, so. Appreciate your question, though.
Are there other questions in the staff report? Commissioner Keen?
This is for Donovan. On your last two pages, or three and four, page three, under Recommendation, says Staff recommends to Planning Commission, recommendation of City Council approved for preliminary PUD.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then it's on, it's on, at the very bottom also, underneath there, this is the final PUD, correct?
This is the final PUD.
Okay.
So I apologize.
No, no, I just, I just figured it was just a slip.
Other questions? Commissioner Patty?
Usually your job to pick that kind of stuff up.
I pointed one out to Donovan before the meeting. For the record. Are there other questions? Does the developer have additional comments you want to make, or bring us up to date with anything?
Again, we were, we were more than able to give you a mini-presentation about, we had a field visit last Friday, so we were scrambling and briefing both the city engineer and Donovan after that, where we'd met with the district administrator, Mr. McKinney, two of his staff, including the engineer that had us put the piping and the other pieces to the west. We were, were able to have them confirm that by saving trees, like we had proposed from day one, that our stormwater modeling document and computer run was able to use a different, click the box, that was less runoff, and once they finally looked at it onsite to see what we were trying to have our engineers do from the very earliest June submittals, it began to, to make sense. The lot number seven, we also were able to see in the field, because finally with the snow gone, we actually could see the ground clearer, the challenges in using the topography that one buys from the county, and how that is sometimes, I'll use the word nuanced, but where does it really have, where are the one-foot contours really at? So when we stood out on lot seven, we realized that it didn't drain the way that the drainage report said it did, it was essentially flat and very easily went to the north. So on the previous engineering drawing that you had up on the screen, you showed a fairly deep pond there, they were quite comfortable that a fairly shallow depression, just in the existing trees, provided the same function, once we got rid of trying to put a pipe from six feet lower up through that zone. So sometimes getting a site visit does in fact create good benefits, and we were only really able to accomplish that, you know, in the last couple of weeks, and they finally scheduled it for us. So we were pleased about that outcome, and happy to be able to explain it in greater detail, but I think that was good enough for now. Look forward to your motion of approval, and we do have interested parties now on getting ready to build, and Mr. Madison is the landowner, is excited about being able to move forward, so. Thanks for listening.
Commissioners, do you have questions? Ms. Young?
The documents that we received do have a significant amount of red on the engineer's most current report. Were those all addressed at your site visit, or which ones remain to be addressed?
My understanding is that most of those were addressed, as far as the watershed, at our site visit. Of course, we need to turn in a, another document that amends the existing permit to the new criteria, and that will be what the city engineer would be able to possess in the near future.
So that the drainage and utility easements have been enlarged?
Yes.
And, okay, and, and all of the, they're, they're comfortable now with the modeling runs, and that the plat, the site plans do match now?
Correct. You know, the plat matches, the site plans will match based on what the watershed gave us as information. So what we're able to do is actually retract a more heavy-handed design that you have in your packet right now, and let it be less heavy-handed. And so the computer models wanted us to run it all as turf, which is a much faster runoff, and what they were able to say is, no, you can turn on the switch that says, you can use existing top soils at a different depth, scarify it, and you can use the woods as is, not cleared, those two have much lower pace, and so that improves everything, and that made it easier for all parties.
Other questions of the developer? All right, thank you.
Just a quick question here for Donovan. This item that just came up here about the fact that the drawings don't, you know, aren't, don't accurately show some of the stuff, some of the stuff's coming off the drawings. Talk to me about that process, when that happens, how, you know, the developer, you've got to write it, you have to write a developer's agreement, is that, do you, do you get all of the corrected drawings back in before the developers? I mean, it sounds like there's some haste, excuse me, some haste and, uh, desired here, but I'm just curious about how, you know, from a timing standpoint or at a process standpoint, how this melding, you know, getting the drawing, getting accurate drawings here, because there's, you know, there's a, there's some work to do here.
Sure, sure. I'd just like to make the point that, you know, one, one big piece of this, this, this red on your screen now, this all refers to a previous final, previous preliminary plat. This, his report, latest report is dated April 22nd, that the, Mr. Jensen was provided an updated final plat on April 22nd. final plat on April 23rd. So, you know, what he's saying, how there is consistency, so this, you know, this basically goes away. But to, you know, to actually answer your question, we don't develop, we don't produce the letter of credit amount until we have approved plans or very close to approved plans. And so that, that piece, you know, isn't started until we have the complete plans.
Okay, yeah, so the onus is on them there.
Yep, and usually in our.
Any undue pressure on you until completed drawings show up?
Right, right, I mean, as far as.
I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, there is a, there is a provision in the zoning code, and I've talked about with Mr. Jensen, where upon preliminary plat approval, they could initiate grading on a site. Of course, it's at their risk that perhaps the final approval isn't forthcoming, but, no, it's up to the applicant to provide the material, and then, you know, of course, we review it.
Are there other questions of the developer? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's any public comment, I'm not seeing any, so we'll skip past that and bring it back to the commission for a motion or conversation.
I'm ready to make a motion, but I do feel that sometime in the future, at a workshop meeting or after one of our early agendas, we could have a discussion about PUDs. I think it is important to talk about PUDs and when we use them and when we don't. I support this one in terms of, I think what, we want to encourage residential development in the city, and this was a way, you know, how far do you go to apply the PUD ordinance to allow development to occur, and what kind of trade-off is there from the developer to the city and back and forth? It's a very good question, it's a very good question, and I think maybe we need to, I raised the question about a year ago when we approved the apartment buildings up on the street going by.
Nineteenth, I remember you raised the question.
Going towards Menards, that road up there. I, at the meeting, I was kind of pushing for more amenities on that site, and we approved it with some amenities, but, you know, it's a good discussion, and I think maybe someday we should have it. It really starts with the staff, the staff sitting down with the applicant to address the issue and to see what the trade-offs are. And then it comes to the planning commission through a concept or preliminary plan, and we can discuss it at the planning commission. But to discuss it on this item right tonight, it's, you know, here we are at final plat, and I think the issues that are left for final plat here are, final PUD are engineering issues that have to be addressed and worked out with the watershed and the engineers, and I am prepared to make a motion, and I'll do that. I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approval of the third Lake Estates final PUD application, subject to the five conditions recommended by staff, and they are the conditions numbered one, three, four, five, and six in your report, eliminating condition two as originally stated. That would be my motion.
Mr. Black's made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Did you want to speak to your motion? Is that enough already? Is there other comments on it? We'll go right to the question then. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
I'm staying. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Hope it doesn't snow.
I heard it went into Pillar Hill when they had white ground, so.
We're into other business. Is there any other business you had for us tonight, Donovan?
Nothing formal from me. I do want to announce on April 29th, the city did submit 2040 comp plan to the Met Council for their review. They have up to 120 days to review, but expect it'll take less, and I'll let you know as that comes forward, and it does come back to the city council for formal adoption, following that review.
There's been a lot of conversation tonight about PUD, and I think Mr. Black and Ms. Young both summarized that. Do you think we could have that conversation at some point, or do you see it more as appropriate when the comp plan comes back and wherever you're writing?
And we're looking at the zoning rules.
I'm sorry?
And when we're looking at the zoning rules.
I'd welcome the conversation, you know, anytime, maybe if you wanted to, we can, I mean, we can talk about changing it, or do you mean just kind of an evaluation of how we've used it, or is it, because that was something actually when, you know, Administrator Parrish left, that was one of his little items, he wanted to have the PUD rules reviewed, and I think he wanted more flexibility, more ways to negotiate for city amenities, or provide that flexibility to developers. And so I'd like to, you know, I think the best conversation would be one, if we're looking for, what's the best way to structure it, to improve, you know, city gains in these, and really provide the flexibility where it's due. If I could provide, maybe do some sort of research and pull together some recommendations, and maybe we could do that at a future planning commission meeting, or if you desire to just, you know, kick around some ideas now, I'm open to that.
Maybe not to see.
Yeah, I kind of tend towards some point in the future, but maybe you can add that to one of our slower nights, or.
A good start is for us, me included, to take the existing code and to read the ordinance as it pertains to PUDs, to make sure that that's clear in our mind, because, you know, we aren't experts on the zoning code, the staff is, I mean, you deal with it on a daily basis, we don't, and just getting the appropriate or the sections of the code that pertain to planned unit developments, definition, purpose, intent, the whole section, for us to go through is step number one, I think, to make sure that we're clear on that.
Sure.
Donovan, is there a meeting on the 22nd?
There is not. We do have an agenda item for the, I believe it's the 10th, the first meeting in June, something we could, I'm sorry, the 12th. I could add that to the agenda, and we have it as a discussion item. First, you know, talking about existing and then talk about potential, you know, how we could improve that.
Is there, is there going to be a time when we talk, you know, there's some, there's a, is there a point, do we do any more approving of the comp plan at all? I mean, when that comes back from the Met Council, that sort of thing, I'm trying to remember what, or are we done with our discussion and approval of the new comp plan as a planning commission?
You know, as a formal step, yes, you're done. However, I mean, we've not even begun the comprehensive rezoning, which is, you know, which, to me, I welcome these PUD conversations, because if we can start kind of front-loading this on, you know, being proactive on things that are of concern to the planning commission, there are many other things that are kind of more of technical nature that will arise as we dig into it, as we get Met Council, you know, as we get the adopted plan, and I, you know, I just made many conversations, workshop items with council, and I'm glad to have this little workshop section after each meeting, so I can kind of tease things out over a long period of time and not have to wait for the third Monday of every month to have these kind of conversations.
So if we, if we give you, would it be appropriate for us to give you a list of things that we have interest in or concern about?
Sure.
As far as, because, you know, I mean, you take the whole, I did that twice now, the whole comp plan, you know, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff that, you know, we'll eventually address, but there's, you know, probably less than 10 items that I would consider hot buttons, things that I'm particularly interested in, you know, one of those things is lot size, and I'm, I also, I share some, I just want to come to understand this PUD thing a little bit better than what I did, what I do now. I mean, I have read through it and that sort of thing, but it just seems, and I don't think there's significant changes in that, in, you know, from what it was to what it, I don't think there are many changes that have been made in that, and maybe that, maybe it's because the comp plan isn't the place where you would.
It's in the zoning code.
Yeah, it's in the zoning code.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, okay.
Yeah, if you want to, you could, you know, provide, as a body, you could, you'd shoot me emails on some things, I could compile a list, or we could create the list collectively at the June 12th meeting. You know, I'm open to whatever, you know, different approaches on that.
I think one of the challenges to implement that comp plan that was submitted to the Met Council is dealing with that very large highway commercial area to the south. That will be a significant challenge.
I think we have some examples on how we could not make many uses there, non-conforming, because I'm committed to allowing things to be as they are until they need to change based on, you know, large, you know, large consolidation of parcels, because I've spent enough time, you know, dealing with the business park property owners, you know, that west side of Highway 61, south of Headwaters, that, you know, it, I think it's, it's just, I didn't like telling people, you know, you can't build a garage, you know?
Right, and.
You know, because someone didn't come along and bring sewer and water across 61 and, you know, buy up all your properties for, you know, corporate campus, you know, or research park or something. I mean, it was great intent, but execution just was not there.
We'll go on to the next one. Karen, did you have any updates for us tonight?
I do not, other than I'm glad to be here.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, we're glad to have you, thanks.
Councilmember Chard?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, we'll go down to.
I don't have any.
Updates either, so we'll move on to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a.
A second, it's non-debatable. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it, we're adjourned 7:43.
Hey, good D, geez.